Ladies and gentlemen, let me call this meeting to order. If you have not signed in on the sheet on the back table, please sign in for us so we have a record that you are here. For those of you that may have never been here, this is the Valdez County Zoning Board's Appeal. This is the September 1 meeting. The way we operate, so you can keep up with us, I will call each case by case number and case name. Someone from staff will come to the lectern, they will give us the request as it has been presented with whatever information. Once they have presented it, there will probably be discussions or questions from board members to staff or among board members. Once we feel like we understand what has been presented, then I will ask if there are any persons here in support. If the applicant is here or someone representing the applicant is here and would like to give us additional information, please come to the lectern, give us your name and address for the record. Give us the information you would like for us to take under advisement. If there are multiple people here in support, due to the size of the crowd and time limitations, please do not come up and give us the same information two and three and four times. Once it's been presented, we have. Once we're satisfied, we understand what is being requested and questions and then all have been asked and hopefully understood, I will then ask if there are any persons here in opposition. If there is opposition, we would like one person to please come to the lectern to give us the information that you would like us to take under advisement. If there are multiple people in opposition, I appreciate that you are here and you would like to have your say, but again, if what you have to bring to us has already been brought to us, please don't tie us up. Please let us proceed. Please give us the information as best you can in its entirety so we don't have rebuttals and then re-rebuttal back and forth. Once we have heard from both sides, it is the normal policy for the board to render a decision here today. However, if the board feels like information is lacking or partying, needs to talk or for whatever reason, it is in the bylaws that we can't postpone until the next regularly scheduled meeting. Okay, at this point, the first case we will call is Lount County Case, VAR 2015-12 Eugene Stone, Clay Road and Old Stateville Road. Carmella, it is your turn.
My first case today is a baroness request by Mr. Eugene Stone. The property is located on the side of Clay Road, the portion of Clay Road that runs between Old Stateville Road and Howard Road. In this case, the applicant purchased the property several years ago and is currently undergoing the planning review process for the expansion of a cemetery. When the applicant purchased the property, there were two existing buildings on the property for which he could not find any permits on, so it was hard for our staff to grandfather in these facilities, because to build this high line of green, we might need our setback requirements, particularly the side yard. Side yard requirement is 20 feet and the building sets 15 feet from the front of the line, and it wasn't enough for us to do it administratively. It was just a con with a shot of that. Staff in this case didn't see where the building would cause a detriment or have adverse effect on making the property, the building sat far enough from the side property line not to present any concern. So the fact that he received his letter of approval to the baroness request, but no condition was.
Okay. Any questions, any discussions from the board at this time? The fact that you could not find building permits has no bearing on this, you don't have to retrospect, I mean retroactively go back and try to apply for building permits?
At this time, as part of his plan review, yes, he would have to permit those buildings.
Has he agreed to that if the board accepts or grants the baroness?
I feel he would have any problem, he's here.
Okay.
He claims the building as an empty shed.
Any questions from the board at this time?
On the smaller building, he's proposing to either remove it or relocate it within one of those two. If he decides to relocate it, will he have to come to you to make sure that he needs the minimum setbacks?
The difficulty of the large building is only makes certain foundations.
Any other questions, any other discussions?
What type of vegetation are we considering on those two sides?
Actually, outside of this particular request, he would have to provide for a interstate bumper, and that was my speculation of what he has to do, but it's outside of this baroness request. He's moved it back.
Any other questions, any other discussions? Is the applicant here? Is the applicant here or is there someone here representing the applicant that would like to give us additional information?
I'm here.
Okay. Would you like to give us any additional information or are you satisfied with what we've heard?
Pretty well satisfied.
All right, sir. Please let the record show that applicant was in, was present here and did not wish to speak at this time. Is anyone here in opposition to this request? Does anyone here has a question about what is being requested? Was there any contact to your office?
No, sir.
Any other questions, discussions from the board at this time?
I have one more question for Carmella. If it had been four feet, you could have done it administratively.
And as a continuance of that, based on the information in the report, had four foot been adequate, you would have done it administratively and we would not have heard it. Okay. Any other questions, any other discussions? We get a motion on the floor, please.
I make a motion, let the grant the baroness as presented by staff, citing P.
I have motion from this quarter month to grant request as presented citing criteria P. I have second from Dr. Housel, all in favor, please raise your hand. Good night, all, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Good luck with it, make it nice.
I will. More than I grabbed the idea.
Okay. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the next case that we're calling is City Valdez Case, Application 2015-04, Charles Bennett, 2891 Greenbeller Drive. Before we proceed with this, the board, as you've seen on the table, you have a request by Mr. Bennett's lawyer that we table this until the next regularly scheduled meeting. It is within our bylaws to grant it, it is within our bylaws to hear it today if there is someone here representing the applicant or if the applicant is here. We have a large crowd, I think most of them are here for this particular case. Any discussions, the board want to talk about in a minute before we start hearing the case? Attorney, what are we going to table it, what are we going to proceed without this attorney?
Trustee, how long did we know that he was not going to be here today?
Our safety phone call from Mr. Bennett's attorney, Mr. Plumb, at about 10:00 this morning. And we got the letter a little bit before the letter.
We have done it both ways in the past, there's no precedent set one way or the other.
Can we hear and then decide if we want to table making a decision?
That is not a problem. We have done that in the past, heard that the case pretty much got down to the end and then decided to postpone for lack of additional information or after request. Please, please. Okay.
This request is from Mr. Charles Bennett for a variance to the front door setbacks. His parcel is located now at 2891 Greenbeller Drive, and the property has a single family residence, his own single family residence, two parts of it. And the applicant is requesting a front door setback variance for a carport and attached carport that's already been constructed. And to give you a little bit of breadth of ground, the applicant came in in January of this year to apply for a permit to get a, to put his carport on the front of the building. Well, we gave him some inapproval and we didn't zone him, didn't zone him for the letter, solving the setbacks. Now, at the time, the front door setbacks were 35 feet. Keep in mind that that was the setback he was given at the time, in January of this year. He proceeds to build what the front porch addition or the carport was going to be. Started building 11 by 34, attached carport, turned into a 30 by 34 carport. Upon inspection, we realized that there was some other work that had been done. A $10,000 job turned into about a $100,000 job. Right now, what we're here for is to consider a front door setback variance. We talked about how the variance, the setbacks had gone, were originally 35 feet. There was a amendment enabled made that changed it from 35 feet to 30 feet. So if he were to pull up permit today, he'd be under the 30 feet setback. So that's what we're considering the variance on today. To show you what we're looking at, there's a single family residence, there's a slot frame, you can see the portion of the carport of a different front porch that extends over the regular setbacks. You can see different angles of what has already been built. That this has been curved to the front porch, about 18 feet, 17, 18 feet instead of the 30 feet of the front. Adjacent property, also single family residence. Some of the additional work that has been done is adding an accessory welding structure. Now, that is a separate, separate board hearing from what's in front of the connect. So the board appeals is just to hear the variance request for the front, for the front setback line. City Council went here, they, in this one, used permit request for the accessory welding So two separate board processes. Zoning Board Appeals is here just to look at the front door setback variance request. Just to keep that in mind. There's about a 12-foot infrastructure to the setback. Staff would get it, there is no hardship, we don't have a breath of whole issues, nothing, but we just thought staff recommend we're supporting that variance request. Staff recommends to go now.
I have a question. How far, maybe I don't know the answer, how far is the front of the house from the street?
From the middle of the street or from the end of the street?
Do you have figures?
From the property lot.
From the property on the second.
That's the setback.
About 55.
About 55.
About 55.
And if he needs to be 30 feet?
From the main house to the property lot. It's about 55 feet.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we jump in cold hardy here, let me reiterate, we understand that there was more work done than the original application for permit was quoted for, but that is not something that this board can address. We can only address the cover haunting that is over the driveway, that's the only thing we can discuss today. My first question, and just for the record, the concrete drive and any landscaping that was done, retaining walls and all that, it can actually be in the setback.
Yes, sir.
It's the physical building itself, the roof line of the building that is in error right now that is extending too far out.
Right, that's right.
The existing width of it is not going to be a problem except where it is in the setback.
Yes, sir.
So when you start deliberating this, if we get to that point, that can stay there. If the board sees, you know, to let that stay, that's not an approach. Okay. Any questions from the board at this time concerning size or how much has got to come off or anything else? Or potentially have to come off if the baroness is not there?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a question, but I have a question as well, and if our decision today, we went ahead and decided on this matter today, if he does not have a representative here because he has requested this, will this open him to be able to come back and appeal any decision that he may make today?
First off, let me answer that regardless of what we decide today, if it is in fact decided to not allow it and to tell him he's got to take it off back to the setback line. If he decides he does not wish to do that, his option is to file a suit in Superior Court, and the contention would be that we erred in our decision.
And Mr. Plumb, to sort of address your concerns as well, Mr. Plumb was the one who dropped off the letter this morning. How they make him aware that the board may assign a particular, they may not, it was a picture distraction, so be aware of that.
So...
Once, once it has been decided here, then he either has to do whatever this board granted him or told him he had to do to get in compliance, or he has to file a suit.
Okay, so it would not have to come back to us?
Right.
I just want to make sure that we don't, if we make a decision today, if we don't have to rehash this out in a month or two, and he has the right to come back and appeal?
The way it reads is he cannot come back with the same request for six months?
Six months or a year.
A year.
In one year. I know at one point it was a year on both city and county, but I thought there was a change. But if it is denied, then he cannot come back with basically the same request for 12 months. And it's never been ironclad put in the minutes of what a change in the request entails, but the rule of thumb has always been, if it's a cow, don't paint it a different color and come back and try to convince us it's not a cow. If it is a significant noticeable percentage change in what they are asking for, then it is not the same request, but it's got to be, it's got to be enough that it is definitely a different request. Any other questions, any other discussions? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir.
I'm here on behalf of the applicant.
Jimmy, is that, I can't see, is that Jimmy?
Yeah, that's me.
Please come to the lectern for a second, please. Most of those of you are, please tell us, give us your address for the record.
My name is Jimmy Cohn, my address is 1806 Plum Street, Valdez County. I was unaware that the meeting had been canceled for this, the request had been made, and I called Mr. Bennett and Jimmy, and they both went into the impression that this is not going to be heard of that, so I've sent word to them, but I don't know if they liked it or not. They have hired me as an architect to help them with some of the technical aspects of it.
The drawings?
The drawings and that. Not necessarily to make the presentation, because Rob Plumb is going to do that, so I have some information I'll be glad to share.
Okay. Do you think one or both of them may be en route, or do you think they are not coming? Or do you have a feeling for them?
I sent them a text. I'd really like to have a chance to go call them and say, you know, this thing's moving forward, with or without you.
Okay. If the board has your problem with it, I'm going to set this aside until we hear the next case, and then if neither one of them are here by that point, then we can decide what we're going to do with this case. Everybody all right with that? Can you help see, touch base with them, say if you think they're actually coming? Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, next case, City Case, Application 2015-05, Oz Bupner, 1510 Norman Drive.
This is one of the more unusual cases that I think I've seen in some years, and working with some workmen for us. This is a case from Mr. Oz Bupner on behalf of Gugu Car Wash that is being built at 1510 Norman Drive on the Hollywood Commercial, Gugu District. Currently, it is under construction, used to be a wooden log. It is under construction with Gugu Car Wash. Basically, you can drive through and sell it to, you can drive through or you can pull over and back, do you have your car, and that nature. Under development, what they are requesting a variance for in the flag, flags are allowed with no flag under certain regulations. They can't be bigger than 60 square feet, they can't be taller than the tall structure of the maximum height in that particular zoning district, or 40 feet, in general terms. Since Hollywood Commercial doesn't have the maximum height, and this is the maximum height of the 40 feet, Gugu is not proposing to construct a flagpole that is taller than 40 feet. What they are proposing, instead of a 60 square foot flag that can be placed by law, they are proposing 150 square feet flag. They are also proposing a hoist side of 10 feet. In this instance, the horse side will be permitted to be no bigger than longer than 8 feet, so two variants, one for size, 10 square feet versus 60, and the hoist side of 10 feet rather than 8. So those are the two variants. They did mention the Hotel of Crete was nearby the property, the two guys, and there are, there's some vegetation, there's a tree, and there's wet ones on the property as well. However, a substantial portion of the property is affected by the wet ones, by the tree, by the vegetation. So they have plenty of room. The staff would like to place the flag, but they've been visible and not been 150 square feet. So staff, we did, did not find the hardship, let me use the note. However, if staff considers permitting this, variance, granting variance, they are allowed by law to have three flags under the same conditions, no taller than 40 feet, but larger than 60 square feet in size. If zoning board appeals, in the minimal, three granted variance, and staff would like to limit the flags to one flag on the law. Any questions?
I have a question about the square foot.
Yes?
The three flags are 60 square feet total or 60 square feet each?
Each, sorry, I meant that clear.
So what you're saying is, I have different flags, but if we have put the 150 square feet, then that'd be the only flag?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you know if the existing one is, is there now?
On Gugu? I don't believe there is a flag. It was not there when I, when I came.
I didn't see a flag on the highway earlier either, but I missed it.
I didn't see one today at all.
There's one today.
Any other questions, any other discussions? And just for the record, when we're talking flags here, we're talking flags, state of Georgia, United States flag, something like it, we're not talking about advertising banners or any of that kind of stuff. And the request by staff that should the board grant some size, size flag other than what is allowed per the flag, that those are not being thrown out, they can still put them.
Staff would like to have, if zoning board appeals, right, the variance, staff would like it just to be just for one flag rather than three flags?
No, no, what I'm saying is if the board, I'm sorry, I didn't even...
I'm sorry.
What I was trying to add is if the board deems it is okay to have one flagpole with one oversized flag, that does not prevent them from having other advertising flags on the ground. We just cannot have a state of Georgia flag or a Lount County flag or...
They would have to get permits for the advertising.
Correct, they would have to get that to, you know, to put those up, but that's not covered in what we're talking.
Correct, I'm on the same page.
Okay, just for a little bit more clarification on that, what flags are we covering? What, what can...
You're covering governmental flags essentially.
Yes, ma'am.
Government flag.
What they have on?
I mean, a flag on a flagpole.
Flag on a flagpole, government banner of some kind.
Right, as opposed to a banner, as you create, or banners that will build interest in applying to that.
Okay. Is that answered?
And Tracy, along that batch of three that are allowed, is that the three flags that we're talking about, state, Lount County, and United States?
Government flag.
But that's what's covered under the three at 60 feet?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions, any discussions? Is there anyone here on behalf of Mr. Bupner or Mr. Bupner representing, yes, sir, would you like to give us any additional information?
Yeah.
So get your name and address for the record, please.
Mike Cooper, 105 West Central Avenue, Gugu Corporations, you're on Valdez County, and all of their franchises, it's generally 10 by 15. And the 15 was, since its last rent total, three flags, they're allowed, everyone loves it. The only process available to seek that release through the baroness process is one of them.
If, if the board should grant one single flagpole with the flag like you're talking about or something close to that... about, or something close to that, and it does away with the other two potential flag poles, does Goo Goo have a problem with that?
No, it is just the one.
Any other questions, any other discussions?
Do you know how large that flag is that's currently?
I believe it's a six foot.
There's a Goo Goo franchise in Douglas, right?
Yeah.
Is there a flag there as well?
There is, I don't know, we didn't do the engineering on that one, so I'm not sure if it's, we're doing one, I'd like to say it's so, it's a little larger than it.
The reason for the flag, is they're trying to entice people to come in with it, therefore they won't see it from the interstate or something?
It's, they're just an American corporation, they've always done it since inception.
Well, that flag is probably proportioned to the height of the pole.
It's a forty foot high pole, it's out there now, certainly the same height. In my opinion, it's a quarter of the pole, so it would be proportioned.
You'll have thirty feet from the ground to the bottom of the flag, forty to the top. It will not be more, more flagged and polled. At one point, there were a couple of oversized flags in town. I think we're down to one maybe now, or two. Do you remember Matt?
I am not sure, I'm trying to think where some of the big ones were.
Beacon Place at the Overpass used to have a big flag, but I think that would be gone. But McAdoo's or Zachado's or whatever, I think they have one on each of their places, except downtown. Is that the only two big ones that we, that I can think of?
That's all I can think of, but I think Southwood Common Facility in downtown, definitely a pop, very high elevation, I don't know how large that is, but it's probably larger than it looks from the rentals.
Yeah, it's, it's a larger flag. They came before us many, many years ago to get that. Okay, any other questions, any other discussions from the board at this time? Anything else you would like to add?
No, sir.
Is there anyone else here in support of this application? Is there anyone here in opposition to this request, or is there anyone here that has questions or needs clarification about what being asked? Okay, the board has pretty much drawn the powers, you can, you can put whatever size flag, if there's a question, you can scale it back. It's entirely up to the board members as to what they may run, or may not run at all. Any questions, any discussions? Anybody willing to give us a motion to start?
I have information that we ran, the request for the two variants is the fifty and the ten feet, but the staff's request to limit that to just the one flag pole on the premises. In, I don't know, my opinion was that the, the flag pole was set far enough off the property line that it would not be in use since to traffic was.
I have a motion on the floor from this, what, I thought I heard something. The grant request as presented, forty foot height, hundred and fifty foot flag size, ten foot per staff recommendation, with the limit, one single flag pole and no additional flag poles, do I have a second? I have a second from this Hobbie. All in favor, raise a hand. All opposed? Okay, we have one, two, three, four, five, have six, four, one against. It passed, please make it look good for us, sir. Okay. Now, we will back up and go back to Mr. Bennett. Jimmy? Did you get a touch a little?
Yeah.
Mr. Bennett, would you like to address the board, give us any information?
Jimmy's going to speak for me, sir. No, sir.
Okay. Before we get into that, we have before you the letter requesting that it be tabled. I don't know what table it would accomplish, but it's up to the board to decide, I think first, are we going to table it, and if we don't table it, then it's time to act.
I still think that we can hear it and decide if we want to table it after we've heard.
Okay, we've heard from staff, we've pretty much heard from Mr. Cohn that there really wasn't anything else to add, pretty much. Is there anyone here in opposition, apparently so, I need one person, please come to the lectern and give us the information that you want us to take on your behalf.
Okay, I'm Charlie Centerway, I'm a property owner in the Eagle subdivision, and most all of these people here are also property owners.
Can I have your address for the record as well?
Yes, it's three one one six North Field Road.
Please let the record show that here is a large crowd.
Now, you had some pictures up there, if you don't mind, I'd like to pass ours out.
Welcome to pass them around, sir.
These are the four pictures. These are active pictures, if you can look at them. Sorry, I don't have one for everybody. The neighborhood first became aware of this project when people came out and cut down some very, very large established oak trees on this property, pretty much wiped down all the trees on the property. Everybody in the neighborhood was concerned, there was a lot of discussion about it, in fact, it ended up in the Valdosta Daily, in a nice sized article that was very much opposed to what it had done. Of course, over a period of time, that has settled down, you don't hear much talk about that anymore. But, we watched over several months, various types of construction going on concerning the carport. First of all, after witnessing all this construction, we went down to the city and obtained a copy of the building permit, which was described earlier. We did that through open records, the building permit was issued on the ninth of January for ten thousand dollars to attach an eleven by thirty-four carport. And as you mentioned earlier, that that carport turned into a thirty, not thirty-four carport, double in size. Several truckloads of dirt were brought in and filled up the grave significantly in front of the house. And then they put in a huge circular driveway on that raised grave. And the driveway also served as the foundation for the outer part of the carport. Now, now construction is proceeded on, there's a lot of landscaping and stuff done in front, as you mentioned, that can be done on the setback. But now, if you look at that first picture that I handed out there, you see the finished product of the carport. It appears to be totally complete. And it doesn't resemble anything, it's not in harmony at any point with the rest of the neighborhood. And you can see what the house looked like before any of this was started. So, to us, that first picture that I passed out there looks more like a commercial application, it doesn't look like the rest of this was started. It's huge, it's overpowering, it's over the top. And we're just not happy with it. It's, we don't feel like it's appropriate for the neighborhood. So, we're wanting, we're wanting to deny the request of variance. Now, I know you want to only talk about this variance, but while that carport was being erected, there was other projects going on at the same time.
Yes, sir, we are aware of that, and like I stated earlier, that is something that does not fall under this board. The only thing that we can talk about is the actual coverage.
I would just like to say a few things for the picture, so we can see the picture of the project. And that is that many, many variances occurred in there because when we obtained the building permit, we also found out that there had been no inspections on the job.
Well, those, here against there.
Okay, but just let me continue.
There are no variances granted for those either. That's still to be determined by city council and engineering and construction department on that. That's, we understand that it happened, we understand it's already in, but that's not something that this board can deal with.
So, some, somehow, this carport is a separate project here?
The only part that encroached into the setback was this roof line. And the only power of this board, the only jurisdiction this board has is over that part. The fact that they did other work inside and outside, that they did extensive remodeling inside and all that, and were not theoretically, at least according to the statement we have, were not inspected, all of that is, it has either been notified and they have dealt with it, or they are dealing with it according to staff and city council, will have to weigh in on the additional residential structure that is there now. That's something, we cannot do anything about that, not in the area that we are able to do.
Okay, I just want to say then, that with the exception of the ten thousand dollar building permit that was taken out, which was, totally did not cover the scope of that project, totally. And I think, you said it cost more like a hundred thousand, that's, that's probably more than that. Throughout the entire project, and the building permit states right on there, if you're going to have electrical work, plumbing work, concrete work, mechanical work, air conditioning, so forth, sprinkler systems, each one of those have to have a separate building permit, states right on the building permit.
Yes, sir.
None of those, this whole project was, was intended to be done without any oversight, any, anything connected with regulations and zoning and building regulations as set by the city, throughout the whole project.
We understand that as a state.
And now, there's a lot of those others, but it's picture, it's picture of what they did from beginning to end.
Yes, sir, I, I understand what you're saying. Any questions from the board on this town? Is there anyone else here in opposition that would like to give us additional information that we have not already heard? Yes, sir, please come to the lectern, get, get your name and the address for the record.
Certainly, yes. My name's Bernie Naker, and my address is three Charles Way. I have property that adjoins signing back of the property question. And the one thing you mentioned, that many of these other things can't be considered in the realm of, of this piece of construction that violates the setback. But, during the entire process, was there inspections that would have allowed the city to see that that setback was already being violated?
There should have been inspections. I cannot speak as to why they were not there, other than the city did not know this was going on.
How could that be?
Because the, this, the permit that was pulled, we, the city, depended on that to be what they were due. Now, as far, as far as whatever inspections should have been done on that ten thousand dollar driveway.
Right.
That should have been done, but if they did not see the other stuff going on in other areas.
I'm not even speaking about the other things, I'm talking about the, the carport and ill wiring structure and so on. So, those are all subject to inspections, as I perceive, framing, roofing, concrete work, the concrete preparation. All of that is within the city's purview to be looking at during that construction, because those things have to happen before you can even pour concrete, for example.
It is my assumption, right or wrong, that there were some inspections of what we don't do.
Without reference to, I'm not sure if you're referring to someone back here, but those, those activities then are not, not looking at the permit that was granted.
I cannot answer that question at this time.
I know, but you're ruling out the opportunity to discuss those things, you know, because it's not within your purview, but...
We can only talk about what is in the actual concrete on the ground.
How do we?
And the roof line over that that is extending into the setback.
Which we certainly hope would be pulled back to the point where it's not an intrusion into the street. Right now, the situation is, if someone falls off the carport there, they'll end up in the street.
That is a possibility that this board is, or will.
Then, how do we, all of us that have come here today, in order to try to, you know, voice our situation on this, and, you know, you know, any, anything that changes the way the setback is and zoning regulations, it affects all of us.
Yes, sir, I understand, and more.
The thing I'm concerned about is that, is the process with the city's inspections and so on, is that not within our opportunity to participate in?
You can question, I guess, in part.
Will they be having a hearing like this in order to, to try to give us an opportunity to ask those questions?
Probably not, sir, because we're going to be determining it probably here today unless it's postponed.
Well, hopefully not postponed, we just, you know, there's a lot of people that came to.
I understand that there's a lot of people.
In the same way, there seems to be a disregard for what construction has occurred, there seems to be a disregard for the fact that the meeting was supposed to occur, and, you know, no one was going to show up.
Yes, sir, I understand, there are a lot of people here in opposition.
But anyway.
A lot of people, excuse you. You keep cutting me off, and I'm trying to let you head your student. I understand that a lot of people are here, they rearrange schedules to be here. It is not our intent to step on toes. What we have is what we have. And we are trying, this board will be trying to determine something to try to alleviate it as best we can, or whatever the boards chooses to see fit.
Can I say something? Sorry. I think what he's trying to ask, and I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Please help.
But I think he's trying to ask, what's the permit that was pulled for the portico? Why wasn't there a follow-up, since it was on the books that he had got the permit? Why wasn't there an inspection done periodically to make sure the portico was being constructed properly?
I'm the director of the building inspections department, I'll be glad to answer that question, please, it would be a good chance.
Okay. Name and address for the record.
My name's Mike Martin, I work for the city of Valdosta, I'm the director of the community development department.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, give us the information.
Okay. The permit was pulled to do an addition for a ten, a ten thousand dollar addition for a porch. The inspections department only goes out and does inspections. What's reached the permit, it is the contractor's responsibility then to call for subsequent inspections as they are required. If the contractor doesn't call, we don't, we don't go back and look to see if they have called for inspections or whatever on a periodic basis. And the only time that we found out that this was going on was when we got a call from someone in the neighborhood, that we needed to go by and check, see what was going on, or there was more to it than had assumed, that we had assumed. But we don't just go out and do inspections on a weekly basis just to tell somebody buys a permit. It is, it's the contractor's responsibility to call us for those inspections. And if we don't get a call, we don't go out there and do it. Now, if we go by a place and see something going on, and we recognize that there's more there than, than should be, we will stop and investigate, but we have no reason to be in that neighborhood unless we have been called. As soon as we got the call, we responded. Unfortunately, it was too late, he already had all of this built. But, that's why no inspections were done prior to that porch already being on the ground.
I have more questions.
Hang on.
I, I just had one.
Hold on, we're, we're still dealing with him, right?
One is the obligation, I mean, what are the consequences if the contractors don't call? Is it the honor system that they're just supposed to call?
It is.
Or is there any penalty or?
What would, what would happen in a situation like this i- is that unfortunately, electricity was all. What would happen in a situation like this is that unfortunately, electricity was already on the house. Normally, our ace is the electricity. When we get called for someone to turn their power on, we recognize that something had been doing on, so we could go back and check our records to see if all of the inspections have been done. If everything's in order, then of course we go out and do our inspections and then we can turn the power on. In a case like this, the power is already there. The electricians are just working with it and around it. And it's really, there's really not anything that can be done unless we happen to find out about the addition or remodeling or whatever that's going on. If we find out about it through curious neighbors, a phone call, through any means that we might have, then we can go out and do an investigation. We can send a city marshal out, or we can send an inspector out to do an investigation. And if we find something going on that's not permitted, then we take proper actions to make sure that that stops. We would generally issue a stop work order. We would send a marshal out to start a case. We would require that person to come in and buy the proper permits. And then to mitigate the inspections that have not been done by whatever means we desire necessary. Sometimes we may tear apart some walls. I mean, there's many different kinds of remedies for that. And we would require that to get us called up to where that situation is at the present day. And once we're satisfied that the work that has been done is in accordance with the codes and all of the permits have been bought and penalties have been paid, then we would move forward from that point.
Do your licensed contractors generally in Alabasta understand that they are supposed to call for periodic inspections?
Absolutely.
Do we have a licensed contractor on this job? The licensed contractor pulled this permit?
No, the homeowner pulled this permit, and that is perfectly legal and allowed by state law. If a homeowner, if a homeowner lives in the home or buys a piece of property and desires to build his own home, the state of Georgia will allow that homeowner to purchase their own permits and to do the work. If that homeowner then needs to or desires to hire subcontractors to work with him, those contractors would have to be licensed, i.e. the electrical, the plumbing, the heating and air contractors, and anybody like that would have to be licensed by the state. Okay? Any other questions?
And those assets, would those contractors that are working, would they be obligated to participate in the permission?
Can you give us just a minute? Let's finish with one piece.
I follow that, thank you.
Okay. The last thing that I want to get out is the permit was pulled first part of January.
Right.
And it was only until April, May, June before they started turning dirt. So there's no reason for the city to be inspecting or even looking for that again until somebody called and says, "We're ready for you to come inspect." So it creates a tremendous burden on the city if they try to keep up with every one of them and call or send, go by all the time to see what's going on. Some permits can even be pulled and never done anything with. So...
Yes.
Okay, now, the other thing, if you would, please direct your comments to the board and back to him, not back and forth.
Okay. The only reason that I brought up the permitting process and the approval process and the awareness process was because I'm a homeowner, actually a home builder, you know, at least a couple of situations. So I understand what Mr. Martin was talking about as far as all those steps. And I know he and the board can't go out and inspect these things without someone telling them where it pays for completion. The only reason I brought all of that up was in order to introduce into the discussion the fact that that's just one of the elements here of all the rest that we're discussing about the carport that has been put there, doubled in size, major expansion of, not by like double the cost, but factor of 10, you know, from the original approval. And that was the point for bringing that up.
I understand. I think the board understands totally. Okay, very quickly.
Okay. What they just got to be talking about is exactly why I said we don't need to just look at the setback. I understand that's your charge, but do you realize how many building permits were not taken out?
Third, third, please.
That's not our, we can't do anything about it.
We understand that. It's just a matter of our mind.
Okay.
We know all of this has gone on, but we cannot address anything on this project except the roof line that is into the setback and violation.
What about the subject of driveways?
That's what I was saying early on. You can put a driveway in the setback as long as it is concrete and not covered. You can put landscaping. You can put retaining walls and whatnot into the setback, and it does not violate the setback. It's when you have a roof line that is attached or not attached to the house, when that extends over or into the setback, we have a violation, and that's what this board has got to deal with today.
Well, there's a safety concern to a great extent here. Whether you want to hear it or not, it's part of the driveway.
It is part of the driveway. Right now, the only thing that has been advertised for this hearing today is the building setback into the, I mean, the building exceeding the setback. And that's theoretically, by law, the only thing we are supposed to deal with today. If there is a safety issue with the driveway, then that's going to be something that will have to be taken up to code enforcement or traffic or whatever at that time. I understand what you're saying. I think the board agrees with what you're saying as far as it's bad to have a blind drive on a curb, but it happens in this case, and it happens in other places. You just have to deal with it either through the city codes or signs or something, or sign up for the blind drive or something. But that will be something that the city engineering or building people will deal with knowledge. It's not within our powers, not within our power.
So then, would anybody, everybody in here from the neighborhood that's opposed to granting this variance just stand up at this time?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Grayberg, I'm not one...
Please, we're stretching this out. I need to proceed. I need your name and address for the record.
Laura Wood, 3004 L.A. I think that the issue regarding all the permits and everything and why it's so important to all of these people that you understand them goes to the issue of your understanding that this was not a mistake. This was not done accidentally. This was done intentionally, and use that information in making your decision. I think that is what all of these folks that don't talk for a living like I do...
If there's a house in the open there, everybody's seeing what's going on, including the city council.
Yes, sir.
City staff. Get it all out in the open. We don't think...
I think that's just what I wanted to let y'all understand, why that, those things appear to be set and pulled in there. And I appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Okay. I have one question, Jimmy or Mr. Bennett. Based on the information or lack of it at this point, Mr. Bennett was his own contractor. He hired everybody, and he ran the show. Yes, no?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Jimmy, would you like to add anything to this?
Sure.
No, Jimmy Bennett, Mr. Charles Bennett, would you like to add anything to this?
I really wasn't prepared for a conversation or a space, or Attorney Rob Plum just told us this morning that this was postponed, that he wouldn't be able to make it today, and he made it clear with everybody. But I guess it was a lack of communication somewhere. Rob was supposed to speak on our half this morning.
Well, the problem is, we got notification of this this morning, like at 10:30, and officially delivered at 11:00 or so.
Yes, sir.
This has been known it was going on for at least 30 days. It's been advertised for 30 days.
Yes, sir.
Rob should have known as soon as he looked at the dates, hey, we got a problem. At the 11th hour, 11th and a half hour, you know, he comes running in and says, hey, we want to postpone. We've got all these people that rearranged their schedules to be here, to be a part of it, to hear it.
Yes, sir. I understand.
Okay.
I have a question.
Okay. We'll hear it written before we try to move on and do something with this case.
If I understand correctly, Tracy, if they had proposed to build this portico ahead and it wasn't already built, we were hearing this case on its own merits. We want to do this thing. We want to have a giant thing in front of our house and build up the front garden and do this thing, and we need 12 feet of variance in order to do it because we can only make a 25-foot wide one, and we want to make a 37-foot one. Did I get that right? They could make 25 feet by right and still be on the side. Like, they want, they could come and say, then we would be deciding on the merits of, does there something about the lot or within all of the questions that we usually answer to say, should this variance be granted?
Correct. The same, the same question as why now. Is there hardship? Is there, is there something, is there hardship enough to justify granting this requirement?
I think the same thing as why now, where it's already built.
It's the same rule that we have to operate with.
It's already done.
Out of concern. If you'll come to the lectern, give me your name and address for the record. What we have is what we got. The rules don't change because it's already on the ground. We still have the same rule. If you have a problem with that, then it's got to go to City Council. Because that's the way the City Council has this set up. A lot of cases, they come in, they ask forgiveness instead of permission.
Yes, what the state reports forgives.
That is, it's the way it happens. It shouldn't happen, but it does happen. It's the City Council makes the rules, and we have to operate within those rules as best we can. Matt, did you have something you want to bring up?
Chairman, I was just trying to clear up a little confusion on a question. You have before you a variance request that has been reviewed and to be reviewed under the variance review criteria as if this structure had not been built yet. Structure that's currently there is in violation of city codes, violation of permits. All of those trigger different processes. All of those are being dealt with. So just like we stated in the staff report, treat this as if this were a new construction. This is a proposed structure. The fact that it is there illegally and violation of various things does not grandfather in at all. So the variance criteria are in your package. Copy of the permit is in your package, and I encourage you to follow the criteria.
Okay. Very fast, because we're running out of time, and we're...
I just heard a statement about the hardship. I'd just like to make one comment. The hardship was totally self-induced. The negative end of it.
Sir, I understand. Okay, now, before we start entertaining the motion on the actual variance, do we want to entertain any kind of motion for a postponing per their request? Or does the board want to move forward with it here and now? Okay, consensus of the board is to move forward with it. Okay. Is there any other questions, any other discussions we need to discuss about this? The board has within its scope of powers to grant whatever the board needs fair. The board has the power to say, to take it back to the limit of the 30-foot setback, which is actually five feet more than what he should have gotten or would have gotten had he begun building prior to City Council amending that setback. So what is being asked now is based on the 30-foot setback, not the 35. Any other questions or discussions before I...
I'd just like to make a statement concerning that even though this individual might have to alter his structure 10 feet, 5 feet, 10 feet, whatever, 12 feet, you will still see the same image. The same image will still be there if they modified that structure.
But he can build to that line, to that setback line by right. We cannot make him take it back any further. We can prevent him from coming across it, but we cannot within our current rules make him go back. He's got that right. So either you go let him keep it, or you go make him tear part of it off, and you can make him tear it back to some level, and that level is somewhere between what he's got now and 30 feet setback.
My fault, but you'll still see the same image. And that's not going to change.
Had he come, had he drawn this up and met all of the setback required before he drove the first leg, before he blew the first leg, before the third, he could do exactly what he did and be within legal limits. He just had to hit stop at the 30-foot line. And because he didn't have a licensed contractor doing it, he was not obligated... Well, no, no, he was obligated to call for inspections, but he did not call for inspections because he did not have the proper contractor doing it. Or if he did, then the contractor dropped the ball, as they should have done. But anyway, that's beyond our scope. What we need to talk about here right now and determine is, what, if anything, in the form of the variance, is going to be allowed? Or are you going to make him take it back to the 30-foot line? And that's the option. Any other questions? Anybody give the motion on this request?
I have a motion to deny the request according to the staff request.
I have motion on the floor for this hobby to deny the request. Is there a second? I have second to the call. All in favor of the denial of the request for the variance in its entirety, that's what you intend. The denial of the request in its entirety, please raise a hand and hold. Okay. An unanimous decision for the minute, please. And before we get any further, what this means is he will have to get in touch with department staff to figure out exactly what is going to be required. But with this vote, he's got to take it back to the 30-foot setback line. He does not have to take out driveway. He can leave the concrete. He can leave the flanders and the retaining wall. But he has to remove the roof line back to that 30-foot setback or more. If he voluntarily moves it back further, then that's up to him, but he cannot crawl to that 30-foot line. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, that for what concludes the business that we've got to offer today. You have a couple of minor housekeeping issues. If you want to stay and listen to the other two otherwise, if you manage to, we'll proceed from there. to the other two, otherwise we give you a few minutes, and we'll proceed from there. Ladies and gentlemen, please, we still got some business to do. Okay, we have other business, we have approval, a minute. Anybody got any changes, deletions, requests? I get a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Any new business, any old business, anything to talk about?
I'd break up the issue. I think it would be a good idea, I want to start right first, I think that we should have, just have some type of intervention that will get us advanced, authorize us who we are, do a free going, so that we won't be questioned by some people, and we might be stalking them or the neighborhood, and if somebody comes up and says, "What you're doing here, I mean, I'm just mad that the partners, the zoning administration, zoning group here, and we're here to look at a site." So, I'm talking about having some security, make our site business that will protect us, because you just never know how people respond to you passing by, twice.
Three times.
And they're like...
Pulling in their driveway, yes.
They're like, "We're on our way, so, you know, we're like, they're like, or something, you can have them in the water, you can look and show them who you are, because sometimes word of mouth is not enough, and they don't trust what you're saying, because it's suspicious as it is, and we're doing this to protect us, and that's why I'm asking you a question."
Okay, well, let me do this then. Would y'all please look into what we might can do in some kind of...
ID.
ID or something.
Business card.
Well, I think a little more...
Which you need is your badge.
You need a photo on it.
For example, yesterday, I was, I had to go to the U.S. Marshals office in federal court, and they issue all lawyers pictures, badges by the U.S. Marshals office, so we don't have to get inspected by the Secret Service and the U.S. Marshal, and go through security. All you have to do is that has your picture on it, has a seal on it, and says, you know, approved by the U.S. Federal District Court or the U.S. Marshal. You see some of your ID, the picture on it, that's all you need.
Now, you don't need a badge, you just need a, something, a picture on it.
Yeah, some little card.
Yeah, maybe a little...
Maybe a little... We'll hopefully, our counterparts in the city, the county sheriff's office, which has equipment for that, maybe we come up with something.
Yeah, sometimes when I go to somebody's property, I'm like, nah, hopefully they don't have a gun.
Okay. If you would look into that, we'll talk about it, it may be...
Yes.
I think it's important, well, I'll tell you, I've never been really grilled, but there had been a time or two that I could tell when he came out the front door that, hey, hey, I'm loaded, I feel it was on board, he... You need an idea.
And I think we honestly probably need to make that clear when people go through variances, when people actually apply, that those staff can...
You may see people come on your property to look at, it's not a bad idea.
So, we need to do it from that angle.
Can I ask for clarification? I think I know the answer, but on Mr. Bennett's case, the reason that everything was decided from the 30-foot setback was because he could have turned around and requested a variance later, later being past the date of the change that was made. Because in my opinion, he pulled permit in April, back in January, which was under 35 feet, he should be taking back the 30.
Apples and oranges. He obtained this permit in January, under the setbacks in January, 35 feet. He had no prior knowledge, or didn't say at that time, the setback would be changing under 30 feet, that was a proposal of the city council in April, it was adopted by the city council. If all he did was work five inch of feet in his favor, but he's still in violation, and even if he revised setback, and by a pretty good margin.
No, 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 I agree, but I'm saying, as your case was presented to us, it was presented based on the 30-foot, not the 35-foot.
Correct.
He was in 12 feet, so is the reason that y'all chose to use the 30-foot setback instead of the 35-foot setback, because he could have came and requested that additional five feet, because now the setbacks have been changed?
No, the work that was done on the permit in January, he was in violation of that permit, it was worked late on.
Right.
So, what he was requesting was a proposal to exceed the current setback as of this month, so we apply this month's ordinance.
Because he applied now.
Correct. So, he was waiting on the schedule of his original permit.
Yeah, like I said, I think that we should have taken the long way back to his original, because that's when he pulled permit, that's the...
Well, yeah, I mean...
I'm sorry, I'm just...
You wouldn't be able to impose something on him more restrictive than per law.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, is that because he could have turned around and filed another request based on that extra five feet for that five feet, that I was wondering, that's why y'all took it?
Because we get that five...
We apply the per law.
Yeah, but she's saying he could have come back and not honored that one year, wait, he could come back with a different request because of five feet of difference.
No, I don't think you could have held him to 35 feet.
That would just be a different color count.
He could have done that litigation for something else, but in this case, there isn't something else, it's just the encroaching of 12 feet of the law, as long as it's up.
I had a question that wasn't brought up. Did Mr. Bennett ever contact y'all's office and say, "Hey, we're about to pull concrete"?
Nope.
Would y'all make a note of it in some kind of log if he did come?
Ah, yes, there've been requests for inspections, and some processes that'll be in the computers. Permits are issued, they don't expire until six months later. Most of that work was done in June, then a couple weeks of the permit expired, which would have been July. And that's when the phone call started, that's when inspection staff went out, looked, and went, oh my God, what's going on here? To check the permit, see what's been done. Obviously, it was not the same stop work order was issued that day, which was July.
But he still completed it, though. Regardless of the stop work.
He had mostly completed by...
There's numbers there today.
Why did they wait so long, the neighbors, until, I mean, when they started doing the framing, why didn't they even contact the city?
Well, they saw purpose issue of network. They didn't know what purpose was. Well, or didn't know that the scope had gone beyond, as far as they'd gone beyond.
Okay, I see.
So, it wasn't until the inspectors went out with permit and see the works, see the permit go, got problems. But most of the violation is inside building, there's a tremendous amount of work inside in terms of remodeling, to which there's a price.
What about inspections?
Now, to bring you up to date, just like I put in the staff report in the background, he has since submitted all architectural plans, gone through the permitting process, paid the double five, filled permit fees, and has paid all of that right. So, permits have been issued to continue to remodeling work, they should elect to pull concrete, the carport's already there. He's still got an issue with the engineering department, like the garage, the sidewalk, that's yet to be resolved, okay? But he's got his permits now, you know, about $100,000 of construction costs for permits. So, that's under way of pending final inspection of everything, and pending the outcome of the public variance, it all has been one of them. He has one more public area to go, and that's more to set regardless than inside building, which goes to city council and the budget, so that's the next one.
How many days does he have to pull it back?
Pull it back? I believe it's two weeks under the code, but he's also got a 30-day appeal. So, then we'll be in communication. Now, he either needs to remove it completely or pull it back to a more better compliance, whatever he does to make it comply is up to him.
As long as he pulls it back to the 30-foot setback level.
Or permit.
Or permit. If he says 30 foot isn't odd, I'm going to pull it back, something else where it fits better, whatever, but...
Can he leave those columns standing there, though?
Well, there's no roof.
Right, so he could have some freestanding columns.
Do they like the Venetian bill?